The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting of April 28th at about 7:03. This is web-based hosted by Zoom. What I would like to do before we start the meeting is I want to thank Attorney Marcus, the applicant and residents of the town of Bethel for their patience and understanding in this virtual world that we're now living in. I would also like to thank David McCollum, who we just saw here on the screen, part of our land use staff for helping to organize and administrate our current meeting. Before we move to the business at hand, I would like to make a request that we have a moment of silence to thank our essential employees, our first responders, and think of our family and friends who are struggling with COVID-19 and those whom we have lost during this crisis. If we may, please. All right, now we'll move on to this evening's agenda. We have a continued public hearing. All regional recyclers of wood LLC site plan special permit, 104 Worcester Street. And before we get started on this, I would like to ask that our commission and staff members introduce themselves. Who'd like to start? Beth?
I'm Beth Kabagna, the Director of Planning for the town of Bethel.
David?
Dave McCollum, Land Use Agent for the town of Bethel.
Nancy?
Nancy Lavalgo, Secretary.
Rich Tibbetts?
Rich Tibbetts, Member of the Commission.
Bob Legnard?
Bob Legnard, Member of the Commission.
I'm Pat Rist, I'm Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Kitty, can we hear you now?
I...
Okay. Penny?
Penny Kersler, Member of the Commission.
Linda?
Linda Curtis, Alternate Member of the Commission.
Rob Stole?
Rob Stole, Alternate Commissioner.
And I don't think Rob Wallace has joined us yet, has he?
Kitty Grant here, if you hear me.
Oh, we can hear you, Kitty. Excellent.
Good work, Kitty.
Thank you.
And let's not forget Ken.
Is Ken on now?
Yes, he is.
Oh, all right. Ken, if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself?
Any person, full member.
Thank you. All right, so I wanted to go over a few of the rules for our public hearings. The applicant will speak first, and I would request that he state for the record that the documents filled in the folder addressed 104 Worcester Street and the written listing prepared by staff and given to him are substantially complete as to the contents of the previous and present application. If there are discrepancies, I would request that you review those items with staff before the next meeting. Secondly, at the end of the applicant's presentation, if the public wishes to participate, it's imperative that you state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to items that have not been discussed during our previous application or hearings. I would remind you all that written public comments have been incorporated into the record from the previous application. Attorney Marcus, if you're ready?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Neil Marcus Cohnell, PC 158 Deer Hill Avenue, on behalf of the applicant, joined tonight by Rob Ribnick, who is on the phone, on the video, a member of the applicant, and Merrick Kemmett is on with us as well. He is our professional engineer. We've heard him present to the prior hearings. So just as a matter of procedure, because this is actually the start of a public hearing on a reapplication, a resubmission of an application that we did when it became apparent that there was a slight defect in notice to the city of Danbury for its, on the prior application. And now that the city of Danbury has been noticed, I guess the first question is whether there are going to be any objection from the city to incorporating the record from the prior proceedings. And I guess the first question is, is there any representative here from the city of Danbury tonight? If you could identify yourself.
Beth, do we have anybody with us?
No, we do not.
Okay. Because quite honestly, since we've started this public hearing to allow the city of Danbury to participate, I want to make sure that they feel that they're not being precluded from participation by not participating in the prior hearings, which we will ask to incorporate in the record. And the reason for that is twofold. A, a lot of, the current status of the application reflects comments made by the public, comments made by the commission members, questions of the public and the commission members, and comments by the professional staff, including Wright Pierce and the town of Bethel staff as well. So we would stipulate that the proceedings from the hearings that took place since the beginning of 2020, when we started this process, would be incorporated and people do not have to feel compelled to restate what they've already stated. And again, recognizing that, I don't know that we have the turnout on the Zoom hearing that we had at the prior public hearings. So to the extent anybody from the public has commented previously, I wouldn't want to disallow or fail to consider what they had to say. So basically, at this point, I'm going to turn it over in about a minute to Merrick to just describe quickly what the plan is that's before you. It's basically to allow us to use the recycling facility that is currently recycling wood products to expand their recycling to include construction debris that is, that emanates from, from basically small construction jobs in the Bethel area, the region. And we've had discussion before that some of those materials now go to the city of Danbury and some of them go through the Bethel landfill transfer station, the former landfill. But the application has been refined in one particular way. We've agreed to install overhead doors on the building. So the building will be completely enclosed. The building that you had seen and discussed up to this point showed basically an open side where trucks can load and unload material, come in and out of the building. And there was a request by a number of members of the public that the building be enclosed. And I think that the comments from the commission members who've commented previously to tonight's meeting would indicate that there's a desire to do that and it'll be done. So that modification will be done. We have also submitted a traffic report and we've answered a list of questions that were raised. So if we go back to the prior hearing, the hearing that, let me get my notes here, took place on February 25th. I think that's the last night we were all together on this application in person. At that hearing, a lot of comments were addressed from the consultants. And at this point, I don't believe we've had a new round of comments from Wright Pierce that are, that any issue has not been addressed. So at this point, I'm going to ask Merrick to just briefly review for the record the site plan that we've presented, what the elements are.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. Merrick Kemmett with Anchor Engineering, Professional Engineer and Land Surveyor. Attorney Marcus pretty much ran over the use of what we're trying to accomplish out here, but I'm just gonna, just surmise a little bit of what's happening on site. Basically, the site is a 7.7 acre site in the industrial zone with an existing wood facility operation. With this proposal, we're going to be introducing recyclables that's going to be evaluated by the state of Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection. With that, we are going to be building an 8,000 square foot building to house those recyclables, which primarily everything must be undercover. That's permitted under that regulation. With that, we are introducing a scale for weighing the product for incoming and outbound as well as storm drainage systems that's going to be improved on site. All of this has been reviewed by Wright Pierce. And as Attorney Marcus would say, our latest response to them was from their February 25th to 2020 letter, and we have not heard anything back regarding that. With the relocation or the addition of the scale house, we are actually relocating the existing office that's on site by moving that next to that scale house and also supplying that facility with some utilities as well as power, telecommunications. Regarding a septic system, we are going to be having a holding tank. Basically, exactly what we have currently, we're just going to be relocating it close to the scale house. The access to the site is at the existing access, which is already paved by two minutes concrete. Most of the site from the prior application was by two minutes, except for the rear of the property where the existing wood mulch facility is currently located. Towards the rear of the property, well, let me back a little bit. Basically, this property is bounded by some wetlands that's located to the east and to the west of the property. Now, if you're looking back at the backside of the plan, which is more towards the western part of the property, there's a top of a bank which we're incorporating a metal beam rail to prevent any debris or any other disturbance going further west of the property. I do believe that addresses of what we're trying to improve on site, pretty much the site is already, the footprint of the existing site is what we're going to be utilizing for the space. So we're not actually going beyond the existing limits of the property. We are going to be incorporating a little bit of additional by two minutes concrete for servicing the site as well as entering into the building. And I do believe, I don't know if it was mentioned earlier, but we are going to be incorporating doors on the building itself, which if you look at the plans, there should be a rendering. It shows that it's a three-sided building with some openings with no doors. But we will be incorporating, if we could add that as a condition of approval, we will be including doors to that facility. If there's any further questions, I can fine tune any answers at that point.
Neil, back to you.
Back on. The, whoops, I disappeared. Hold on a second. I came back. I'm back. Okay. The, again, without going back over the discussions that we had at all the prior hearings, it's our contention in the application that we meet the requirements of the zoning regulation that allows a permit for this type of use in this zone. We beat the setbacks. We've gone on at great length to show the various measurements from the site, the use on the site, to the adjoining residential zones. And we've determined, we've submitted to you a bunch of maps that overlay the various zones to show that we maintain the 750-foot setback set aside. And we've talked about, again, the traffic report speaks for itself. There's no indication that the anticipated traffic on the site will create any issues with the flow of traffic in the neighborhood that's there right now. The level of services that were measured for any various intersections are not going to change. And that basically, our position has been with respect to traffic, that the people who will use this facility are already in the traffic flow of Bethel. They're either driving to a different side of Bethel or they're driving into the city of Danbury to do the type of recycling that we're talking about. We spent a lot of time going through the DEEP requirements. We've given you the history of the site from the DEEP. There were a couple of citations that were corrected upon inspection by the DEEP. They were, the site is in compliance. And we've given you the requirements for licensing the personnel who handle any type of what might be considered hazardous material, asbestos and the like. And we've gone on in great length to tell you exactly how that material is handled, how it's stored, and how it's transported from the site. And at this point, as I say, at the end of the conclusion of the hearing that took place in February, February 25th, we were almost at the point to say that we had addressed all the issues that had been raised until we realized that the city of Danbury needed to be addressed as to their issue. Having heard no objection from the city of Danbury or having no participation on behalf of the city, I'm not sure that they do have any opposition. As I say, quite interestingly, the city of Danbury has a recycling facility much larger. We've seen pictures of it presented, particularly by Pat Parafort in his presentation of a rather large facility in the center of Danbury on White Street. So that to the extent that the city of Danbury is worried about the traffic that's going to be generated by this facility on the Bethel-Danbury line, I think it would be a little disingenuous because the traffic that is going to come to this facility is traffic that might very well otherwise end up on White Street and Danbury. Again, following pretty much the same truck routes to get there. We talked about shipping off-site. Our off-site shipments, we intend to have no traffic through downtown Bethel. Anything that goes off-site to upstate New York or to Ohio, other places that have been identified as receiving facilities will go on Interstate 84 and will leave the site through the city of Danbury and through Shelter Rock. The neighborhood around us, we talked about what's across the street, the type of facilities, the type of trucks, the type of materials that are coming in and out of the industrial zone in Bethel along Worcester. We talked also a little bit, I think, about the industrial zone in Danbury. Again, you're talking about the IL-40 and the IG-80 zone in Danbury that make up the bulk of Shelter Rock next to the residential areas. And the fact that the use that we propose is not out of sync or is not out of harmony with what is the use, the land uses in the general vicinity of the applicant's property, both in Bethel and in Danbury. So at this point, we would be happy to answer any further questions of the commission, but I think we've addressed all the ones that we are aware of up to this point. And to the same extent, if the public has any further questions or comments, we'd be happy to address them. So I'll turn it back over to the chair and we'll stand by for response.
Thank you, Attorney Marcus. Before we move on to public comments, I'm going to ask a member of our staff. David, would you be kind enough to explain to the public how they can raise their hand if using a computer with a mic or how to use their phone to ask a question?
Most certainly, Pat. Again, just as a formality for the record, Dave McCollum, Land Use Coordinator with the Bethel Land Use Department. I'm going to go through a couple ways that folks and members of the public that are wishing to speak for the record. I'll give you guys instructions on how to do that. For those of you that are connected by computer, there should be a control panel, a webinar control panel that appears at the bottom of this screen. If you bring your cursor over it, and there should be an option for you to do what's called raising your hand. By raising your hand, that lets us know that you have a comment that you would like to provide and we would unmute you at that time for you to provide your comment. For those of you that are joined, oh, and those same instructions apply for people that are joined by iPads or other mobile devices. For those of you that have joined this meeting by phone or do not have a microphone set up with your computer, a second option that is available to you to speak would be for you to press the star key on your phone and the number nine. And that also raises your hand. If you don't have the phone number handy and need to use the phone to speak and give public comments, the number is 1-6-4-6-5-5-8-8-6-5-6. And the meeting ID is 9-9-4-1-1-1-1-2-2-5-7-4-3. I'll repeat that again. We will not be accepting public comment via the chat option. So if you have the chat option open, that will not, that will not be admissible for public comment. For you to get to the raise hand button, you may have to click on the participants. You may have to click on the participants control in that control panel at the bottom and click next to your name. And that will also give you the ability to raise your hand.
Thank you, David. All right. We'll now move on to public comment. Please raise your hand. You will be recognized and then please give your name and address.
Okay. Ari Gitlitz? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am finding the people that have raised their hand first. I'm going to the people that have raised their hand first via the Zoom chat feature. Raising your hand on your screen is not the way to go about raising your hand. You have to raise your hand through Zoom. Okay. So I have a gentleman, Pat Parafort.
Hi, Dave. Thank you. Just can you verify you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you. So I'm actually going to read from a prepared statement I wrote just to get my order. So bear with me while I read this. So thank you to the...
Say your name for the record before you do that, Pat?
Oh, certainly. I'm sorry. Pat, I always forget that.
And your address?
Yep. Patrick Parafort, 52 Worcester Street, Bethel, Connecticut.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, zoning board, for this hearing tonight to continue to receive the input either for or an opposition to this application. This has been a very long application with a large amount of information being shared. I still refer to how we can stop landowner from using property in a way that is in compliance with zoning laws. I agree. And I would not be talking against this application if this application was in compliance with the zoning laws. The applicant knew at the time he bought the property that this location was not suitable for this type of use. Even with the current zone change, which the applicant themselves wrote, they are not in compliance. This application actually started back in 2017 when the zone change was requested allowed this type of activity. Why this lone change, zone change requested instead of a variance? I can only guess that it was because the applicant knew that they would never receive a variance for this type of use and the large outcry that such a request would create from the residents of Bethel. They would ask for a zone change, which would not create a contention. What about the homeowners like myself who rely on the zoning laws and the board to protect us in the town from this type of business opening up next to them and destroying the property values? Does this request to increase profit for a business outweigh the rights of 100 neighbors and taxpayers? This is the first property seen when entered. Should a profit margin of one business be allowed to destroy the atmosphere, the charm, and the values of Bethel? Especially when the use is not allowed in the zone. Again, the applicant knew what was allowed on a site prior to purchasing the site. There's no need for a transfer station in town. We already have one and there is another about a mile away. As is stated, a large amount of the information has already been shared and I'm confident that the committee will review all the information that has been presented when making its decision. As such, I will not review all the information, but I would like to highlight a couple items. This is an application for a special permit, which gives authority to the board to deny this permit if it does not meet the criteria for such a permit. It is my opinion, this application does not meet several of the following criterias as set out in E-1 zoning purpose, E-3 overall neighborhood compatibility, E-4 suitable location for use, E-5 appropriate improvements, E-6 suitable transportation conditions, E-9 avoidance, nuisance avoidance, excuse me, E-10 plan of conservation and development. Not meeting even one of these requirements is ground for denial. I would also like to draw your attention to guidelines to the Bethel regulations with states. The zoning regulation intended to guide the land use activities in Bethels that will, A, protect the public health, safety, and welfare. A transfer station does not do this, especially as we already have one in town and we have one less than a mile away. It does not add to any public health, safety, or welfare. In fact, it takes away from it, especially with the added traffic. It needs to maintain and enhance the community character. Please don't tell me you believe a transfer station is going to add to the community character when it's less than a mile from downtown and on Main Street. And it needs to improve the economic value and property, general welfare of the residents. There's been several studies submitted to this board showing that it does not increase property value. I don't think there's anyone that can believe that a transfer station will increase the property value of the residents near it. So again, many reasons to deny this application. Since the beginning of the original application, the applicant has been shifting his explanation or answering questions to adjust what they believe this committee wants to hear. Originally, when the zone change was requested, it was stated this was needed for large contractors and not the homeowners. Now that has changed, as they are now stating this is needed for homeowners and not the contractor. Again, this is all on the recordings of the minutes. It was originally said that the loads being brought on the site could never be inspected for pollutants. Now it's being said, while it's still the sole responsibility of those bringing the garbage into the site, the applicant will be inspecting each load. Again, they say they can't stop it and it will still be the responsibility and fault of the homeowners if we pollute that site. It was first that these items would not get wet. Now there'll be water misters watering the loads, keeping them down. Even with garage doors, these items are going to get wet and it's going to seep into the ground and the wetlands. The latest traffic report demonstrates the smoke and air tactics of responding to questions. Traffic was raised as a concern throughout the application. So the applicant on their own hired a firm to conduct a traffic study, which came back that there would be no additional concerns based on this proposed change.
I got to interrupt.
Yes.
This is the exact same speech you made two months ago and you're supposed to only be addressing new items that haven't been discussed before. Please limit your conversations to new things that need to be addressed. Don't repeat things we've heard three times already. You're wasting our time.
My intent was not to waste your time. Like I said, I had pre-prepared this and I believe the applicant also reviewed items that were all reviewed and passed, but I will amend my comments. So as far as the traffic study, traffic study was just submitted in the last public... as far as the traffic study, traffic study was just submitted in the last public thing. And I'd like to mention that traffic study was based on only five additional vehicles, not any more than five. And I don't think there's anyone that believes that only five vehicles will be increased by the use of this. I would also point out the condition or the own change that this is being allowed under. Again, it states that it has to be indoor stores sorting, separating, shipping of construction brief. You look at the application right off the bat, you can see several items are outside of the 8,000 square foot building, which as you stated, I had pointed out in previous meetings. Again, you know, with, with all the examples of how this application does not meet special court, the special permit requirements, it does not meet the zoning regulation and does not meet the zone change, which the application themselves wrote. I, I don't see how the board can approve this application in any way. And I also like to point out, which was brought up at the last meeting, so I'll bring it up now. The 750 feet of a residential zone, the property is in within 750 feet of residential zones. It's very clearly stated in the zoning board meetings and recordings what the intent was of that regulation and it's well within those 750 feet. So I apologize if I recapped, I tried to keep it brief while I can and I appreciate you taking the time to hear my concerns.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay. I'm going to Pat, we're going to go for the person 12039485497.
Hi, Drew Slack at 42 Worcester Street.
Could you spell your name for the record, please, sir?
Yeah, Drew, D as in David, R E W, last name is Slack, S as in Sam, L A C K.
L A C K. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. All right. So two points. First goes to Kenny on the boards there. You know, we're all reiterating what was said in previous meetings because all we're doing is kicking the can down the road and feel like we need to continue to state our case because this is absolutely 100% not needed in this area. And, and our good friend at 52 Worcester Street who just spoke has made a great case of why that is the case. So to sit there and tell him not to reiterate these things, we have to keep having these meetings when this should have been denied months and months ago.
Mr. Slack, Mr. Slack, I'm sorry to interrupt you. But no, we don't want to go through and repeat everything that we've previously heard. It's all on record. So if you have any new comments, any new questions, absolutely move forward. But please don't discuss anything we've already heard.
Sure. I, I just had to say that because I, I feel that, that that was unnecessary on, on Kenny's part. Second part is that they specifically said that they're not going to bring any traffic through downtown. So when you have an 18 wheeler that's going downtown, they're going out to 53. They can't go down 53. You're saying it's all going to go through Danbury. How do we know that all that traffic is not going to be coming down Worcester Street right past my house? And who's going to be coming? So regardless of what's leaving the facility, what about what's coming into the facility? All the cars that are coming from Reading and, and in downtown that are coming up to use a facility, coming down through downtown, through Worcester Street, right down my road, right across my front street. It's bad enough the amount of garbage and debris that I pick up in my front yard that is falling off of cars and trucks and everything that's driving by regardless. Like compound that by however many cars they're saying are going to be coming through. It's, it's unnecessary. This is a residential area. We've, we've spent a lot of money to get these sidewalks that go all the way down Worcester Street now. Everybody, you look out there, everybody is out walking now. And now we have these big tractor trailers and big pickup trucks and dump trucks rumbling down the street. It's not conducive for what we're trying to build here in Bethel. We are trying to build a very vibrant downtown, which we have the footprint in the mortar, the bricks, the base to build a phenomenal town. And we need to build on that and support it instead of looking at one particular little aspect that could maybe generate some revenue for the town and, and exploit that when we're losing focus of the good of the whole entire thing. There's no way that an 18 wheeler is going through Danbury to go downtown. They're coming right down Worcester Street, cutting down Chestnut and going to 53 because they can't get down 53 with a bridge for the train tracks. So they're coming down Worcester Street and out to go downtown. Like where are these trucks that are leaving these semis? How can you guarantee that they're going through Danbury and not coming through Worcester Street? How are you going to dictate to whoever's coming and dumping everything at that facility? That they're not going to be coming down Worcester Street and through town to go down there to dump it? It's impossible. It makes absolutely zero sense that, that, that we would even be in this position to be able to sit here and talk about this.
Anything else, Mr. Slack?
That's all I have to say at the moment.
Thank you.
Okay. I am going to open the floor to
Excuse me, David.
Yep.
I brought everybody up now. So if you don't mind, I can go through and we'll move this along a little bit. The next person I see that would like to speak is Bill O'Halloran. Bill?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Mr. O'Halloran, Mr. O'Halloran, if you'd be kind enough to give us your address.
Bill O'Halloran, 60 Great Hill Drive in Bethel. I'd like to speak on two items. One is the traffic report that was submitted, was submitted on the 20th of February. That traffic report, I believe, was referred by the planning zoning commission to the police commission waiting for their comments. However, that traffic report was written by an engineer who I certainly don't question his expertise. But his very first sentence in that report was that he is assuming five entry trips and five exit trips on a weekday. Those are very faulty assumptions. That assumption flies in the face of the applicant's own project engineer. In a letter dated February 11th, 2020 to Beth Kavagner from Anchor Engineering in response to a series of questions, a very different number was supplied. Question six asked about the number of projected daily trips. In response was a chart that showed 39 daily trips were expected. 33 inbound and six outbound. That's a very different total number of trips. So I believe that entire traffic study is bogus. Having it sent to the police commission is a wonderful idea, but it's an absolutely useless traffic study. In point of fact, the applicant himself had his own engineer admit to the number of trips that were going to be made. It is not five in and five out. It may be six out, but it's going to be 33 inbound trips. And those 33 inbound trips are not going to necessarily be traveling through our neighbors in Danbury. They're going to be coming from wherever his customers are going to be. And that could very easily be up Greenwood Avenue and Worcester Street. It could be 53 or it could be 302. So having any, giving any weight to that traffic report is just a waste of time. I believe the commission should be, at the very least, throwing that entire traffic report out and requesting a new one. And by the way, now is not the time to be looking for a new traffic report because of the situation we're in. No one could be doing a legitimate traffic study today. There is no traffic that could compare to what a normal spends of time would be. So I believe the applicant should at least be using honest answers when he's providing them to his own traffic engineer. Never mind giving honest results to the commission. The second item I would like to bring up is the whole question that Patrick began to ask. And that's the issue of a 750 footies, 750 foot difference from use of the lot versus the use of the building. I believe Attorney Marcus Hart at the meeting on the 25th, was it? And tried to say that the question of a use should be measured from the building. I, for one, don't believe that's the proper interpretation. He's certainly allowed to make his interpretation. However, if you measure the use, as Patrick said, from the lot is, is nowhere near 750 feet away. There are residential buildings within 750 feet of his lot. And the commission is are, you folks are attempting to provide a permit for a use of that lot. That use is for his, his business. It is not for a building. The, the application is for the, for a special permit for construction and demolition transfer station. That is what section 43, let me get the right numbers, 43M. Ask you folks, that is your that is the requirements of the zoning regulations of the town of Bethel. You folks help write those regulations or in charge of enforcing them. 43M3 talks about allowing warehousing. That's the use is allowed in 43M3. What you allow is a use of, of a building, of a lot. And that is, is what should be looked at. And that is what the 750 foot regulations should be measured from. Not from the building. I should think at least the commission should rule on that issue immediately or have your legal counsel rule on that. Because in fact, if the 750 foot distance is measured from the use of the lot and the business that the special permit is requesting, then we're wasting our time going back and forth. Because that would immediately require the rejection of the special permit. And there's no sense with us going back and forth with this. So I would respectfully request that the commission rule or get a ruling on how they would interpret their own regulations for the zoning, of our Bethel zoning rules. And by the way, and that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Bill O'Halloran.
As I let him.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to allow Marlene, Marlene.
It's my wife's computer.
And sir, could you just do me a favor and state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Harry Gitlitz, 86 Great Hill Drive, Bethel.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
G I double T L I T Z.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I have three points that I've not spoken on before. One is I was finally able to look at the plans that you, that were available this morning. And I noticed that in the zoning compliance table, it only references an 8,000 foot building. I believe there are three major buildings on the site. It was stated by Attorney Marcus at a previous meeting that the storage sheds would be roofed over. So I think that meets the definition of a building. So that entire side of the property now becomes a building. And along with fire requirements, I would imagine that the area of that building be included to see if it complies to the zoning area requirements. And just tonight, he mentioned the scale house. That would be the third building. So I believe that the zoning compliance tables should have three buildings on it. My next point was that at the last meeting, I know that the engineer was on vacation, but it was described that there was a crest bifurcating the lot into two slopes. One slope went to the galley system and the other slope went somewhere else that was ill-defined because the attorney, the engineer was not present. I believe the plan indicates a sheet flow that would go across the backside of the property and go right into the wetland. I was not able to determine if that water would be restrained from heading into the wetland. But my question is if it is, if it isn't restrained, I think that's a problem. And if it is restrained, how is the water treated and where does it go? Since it was stated that that water does not, from half the paved area, does not go into the galley system. And my last point is that I believe that a traffic study that the data should be arrived at either by the commission or a third disinterested party. Because when the applicant makes up his own data, I believe that the report is really fallacious and I think that should be addressed. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person waiting to come in is Donna Peschko.
Yes, hi Donna. My name is Donna Peschko and I live at 12 Gemini Road, which is in the development directly behind Cancelled Property. I, I have two questions that I, I believe were discussed at the last meeting, but I, I don't know what the answers to them were. The first one was there was some discussion about how if there was raw material dropped like from construction work and it could be old construction, you know, people are doing, you know, hiring a contractor and you're bringing it there and you're dumping it. There might be things in there that potentially could have asbestos in them. And then there was, you know, going to be a system of spraying down and wetting them down. So there was talk about where that runoff would go and how you would keep it out of contaminating the product that the current wood processing plant sells as mulch to the public as well as the wetlands. And there was also questions about the fact that you had no plans for a fire suppression in, in a building that would potentially have hazardous waste that would cause hazardous fumes into the neighborhood if there was a catastrophe.
Is that it, Donna?
Yeah. So those were my, my points that I know they were discussed at the last meeting, but I didn't have answers to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kristen, I see that you're the next person. Is there a Kristen still online?
I, I, yep.
Okay.
I tried to unmute her. I'm going to try to unmute.
Good. I've got them on my, I'm, I'm unmuting them myself. Kristen, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Kristen Emard, 28 Worcester Street, Bethel, Connecticut, 06801. Actually, Donna just addressed a lot of the questions that I wanted to hear back on, one of which was the traffic study. I, last time we discussed it, I thought there was going to be a follow-up traffic study from the town. I just was curious what happened with that. The sprinkler system, I was also curious about how they're going to prevent cross-contamination of the wood products that they sell onsite. I would like to know how the residents of Danbury were notified of the traffic coming through and if we could review the route the traffic was going to take. My mother actually lives on Main Street in Danbury and she was not notified of a traffic pattern or any hearings about this. And I think it could impact her directly. I just figured she would get notified. And then I would like it if the, the board could tell us where we can find information on the process. So my concern is that this negatively impacts my property appearance and value in several different ways. And I would like to know like, when are the decisions made? Like, do we get to know before you make your final decision that a decision for the permit is going to be approved or disapproved? Do we get one final notice before that happens to contest it in any last way? And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Next on, next on the list, we have Maureen Lor. And just please state your address for us, Maureen.
Sure. Hi, thank you. At 68 Worcester Street.
Did you get that, Nance?
Yep, got it.
Okay, go ahead, Maureen.
So I just wanted to go on record as a young family homeowner on the street, just so that our opinion is heard. We've lived here for 15 years now in, on this street and we just think that this is the wrong kind of thing for a residential area. The, and also it should be noted that the sidewalks on Worcester don't go all the way down. So past the S curve on Worcester, the sidewalks disappear. So past the S curve on Worcester, the sidewalks disappear. So the thought of having tractor trailers, dump trucks, more than we have now, come barreling down the street when we have children on every side of us, across the street, diagonal from us, there's children and families everywhere. It would be irresponsible to have this down the street from us. I just wanted to voice our concerns, you know, as a normal family just living on Worcester Street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, at this time, and David, would you please look through and see if there's anyone else that hasn't spoken? And Pat also that wishes to speak?
I am not seeing any more raised hands for participants. I'll go through and just.
If anybody's on screen and they want to wave, we'll unmute you.
Um, I, I suppose if, if you, if you want to accept, or if have people say they want to indicate comments that way, Beth, I suppose that would work.
I'm looking now. I don't see anybody that is appear to wish to be speaking.
Okay, okay.
Pat, could I, just to keep this moving along, just to state for the record, as far as the traffic, there's been a lot of discussion in regards to the traffic tonight. The item after the last public hearing was referred to the police commission, who is the traffic authority for the town of Bethel. They, due to COVID, have not had a meeting. I spoke with Captain Pugner today and they do plan on having a meeting to review the traffic report. And it possibly will be within the next two, two weeks. And hopefully it would be able to be discussed at the next meeting. The other item in regards to notifying residents of Danbury, there's some state statutes that we as a, as a town have to follow. That's where the technical mistake was made during the last application process. And what we do is we notify the city of Danbury, the town clerk by statute. And I also notify the planning department as a courtesy. So no individual residents in Danbury, unless they were within 100 feet of the property, were not notified. And again, that is done according to the statutes and that's all I have, Pat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Real, real quick, I'm just gonna shout out a reminder. I know we don't have any participants that have indicated by computer, but if there's anyone that wants to indicate that they wish to offer a public comment by phone, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. I don't, I don't think there's anyone else in, in the meaning that that would apply to, but in case there is, that's how you would do it.
Okay.
Doesn't look like we have any more hands and questions.
There is, there is one more. Should I?
I believe that's Kristen Emard and she'll have to, she's already spoken once and we're following the procedure of our normal public hearing. We're letting the applicant address some of the comments first.
Okay.
You've got two participants there with raised hands.
One of them is Kristen Emard.
Who's the other one?
Phil, can I ask, hi Phil, can I ask you to identify yourself, please?
Of course. Hi, how are you? Sorry, we're, we got a little feedback here. Hi, Phil Langin, seven Putnam Park Road.
And how do you spell your last?
L A N G I N.
Can, can you repeat that, please?
Sure. Phil Langin, L A N G I N, Putnam Park, seven Putnam Park Road.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to wave in here real quick because myself and my family used to live on Worcester Street for a long time. And so I just wanted to speak up and support our neighbors down there and just, you know, kind of reassert some of the concerns that they have. So that's it. That's all I'll say and.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
All right, I guess there's no one else. So attorney Marcus, if you would like to address some of the comments and questions that were made?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple. I'll take them in the order in which they were addressed. First of all, Pat Perrefort, as, as was indicated, has basically said the same thing to you tonight that he has said previously. And there's no evidence in the record that really supports his position. He just doesn't like this facility and I know that. But to, as to his claim that it, it's not in compliance with the zoning regulations, quite honestly, he's really not the authority to tell you that. I think that you'd be better off asking counsel to give you some advice as to whether the application as submitted is in compliance with the requirements of the zoning regs. But he constantly in his presentation refers to the facility as a transfer station. Now, we've given you the document, I'll show it to you again, it's in the record, the general permit to operate a commercial facility for the management of recyclable materials in certain solid waste. We're making, we're making a request to operate a recycling facility on the site, which already is a recycling facility. So the use of the property really isn't changing. The materials that we're going to recycle will be expanded. So to now say that what we're doing there currently isn't allowed is really kind of disingenuous. And to suggest that, that this becomes a transfer station, it's not. It is a recycling facility, which is going to be licensed under the DEP regulations, not as a transfer station. So that's issue number one. The other question, I think it was Drew Slack said, well, this facility is not needed. Well, quite honestly, if this facility isn't needed, then you're granting a permit. Doesn't make any difference because if it's not needed, it's not going to operate. People won't go there. People have to worry about traffic. People don't have to worry about the handling of materials because if it's really not needed, it will go out of business very quickly. So I think that that's disingenuous as well to suggest that the applicant doesn't meet your land use regulations because he's got a stupid idea. That's, that's just not the case. The other issue is, I think O'Halloran questions the traffic report. Well, the traffic, somebody said, well, you gotta read the traffic report. It's false from the beginning. These, this poor misled traffic engineer says that there will be, the applicant estimates that the project will generate a limited amount of additional traffic. Somebody left out the word additional. The word additional is what we're dealing with. There is traffic on this site today. Trucks in and trucks out, dumping wood, picking up mulch. It's a business. The question was, how much additional traffic will there be if we expand our operation? So the real question here is, you know, what were we asking the traffic engineer to report on? So if, if Mr. O'Halloran and a couple of the other members of the public are unhappy with what we ask, then they're correct. You should go to your own traffic engineer as a town and ask the questions that they want to ask. Because quite honestly, a lot of the comments for the public deal with their dissatisfaction with the way the town of Bethel operates its roads in Worcester Street. It allows, it allows people who currently drive on Worcester Street to dump garbage on the street. You know, that's not our application. I think that, and I trust that the commission sees the difference, but the public may not see that. And it's a shame because they really ought to see the difference at that point. The, the other issue is a lot of people talked about traffic. We talked about fire suppression. We talked about that in a prior meeting. We, I think Beth Kavagna already addressed, notice to the city of Danbury was done per the statute. And then one of the comments of one of the last speakers says that this use is improper for a residential area. And that is of course the nub of this problem. We are in an industrial zone. There was testimony at the prior hearing as to the heavy industry going on right across the street from this property. And then for the residents who live nearby, they do live nearby, but more than the statutory distance, to say, well, you really have to consider this as a residential zone is improper. It's improper to suggest that to the commission. It's improper for the applicant to have to try to show you that this is a proper use for a residential zone. So that's my general response to the comments. They're not new, but they do deal with the, with, with some misconceptions. If there's further information that you need, we'd be happy to provide it. But at this point, you know, if you have to get advice and commentary from your traffic engineer and from the town council, we'd be happy to consider their comments as well. Thank you.
Neil, would you be kind enough, Donna Peschko had a couple of questions, but she didn't hear what the answers were at the last meeting regarding construction debris coming in that might have asbestos in it and the fire suppression system.
I'm gonna go to Merrick. Merrick, could you comment on that, those two questions? Fire suppression and how we deal with asbestos?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm unsure of what was said at the last meeting regarding that because I was away on vacation. However, the missing that happens is.
Are you ready, are you ready for me? You got me?
Somebody, somebody mute Neil. Yeah, he's muted. So regarding the missing, the missing is used to, to miss the dust. And it's not a heavy amount of water that's happening. It's just a slight mist, just to moisten the dust so it doesn't create a dust hazard. As far as the asbestos coming in off a load, any asbestos that's not properly coming in will be sorted and contained and, and taken care of inside the building and then disposed of properly per the requirements of DEEP. So primarily the, the material that's coming into the site should be already permitted not to not have asbestos. Unfortunately, if there is an item in there that does have asbestos, it will be sorted out and handled properly according to the DEEP guidelines.
Thank you. Beth or David, it looks like we've got five raised hands.
Excellent.
All right, I'm going, should, should we continue accepting public comment there, Beth?
Yeah, we allow a second round.
Okay, okay. I'm going to open this first to, to people that haven't spoken previously.
No, no, excuse me, David. We're just gonna run down the list. It'll be easy. Just follow each other. Pardon for the interruption. One is gonna be Kirsten Emard.
Hello?
There?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I have my work computer here, my home computer. I've got three different headsets going on. I apologize.
We can come back to you, Kristen, if you want.
Yep, we'll come back to her.
Okay, thanks.
Next on the list is Drew Slack. Drew?
Just to follow up. Yeah, hi, how are you?
Okay.
And I appreciate everybody's time on this. You know, it's, it's obviously a very heated debate. I, I take offense with Neil calling me stupid for, for what my question, well, answers were. I didn't say that there wasn't a need for it. I did say there wasn't a need for it because we have White Street and we have our own transfer station, all within a very small radius of this current place. There's not a need for it in a residential area downtown. We should be promoting residential downtown, not industrial. We have an opportunity with our town to really expand this walkability, livability, get everybody out and about in a really quaint, cute downtown. There's very few of them in Fairfield County that are affordable. You have Canaan, Ridgefield, Westport, Greenwich, they're super expensive. People come here and they say, oh my gosh, what a quaint, great downtown. We have phenomenal restaurants and mom and pop shops that we support by having people living downtown and walking into these. We should be supporting residential and not industrial. What, what we're doing is making this not want people to do residential. You're gonna put that down there. If anyone wanted to do any development in that area for residential, that's gonna bring people in here, increase our home property values. I mean, that's what we should be thinking about. What's good for this town? What's good for the homeowner, for the investor of this town? Not the one person that's gonna profit from this, but the whole of the community of us as a town. We should all want to do better, not just one person, not just one entity, but the town, all of us. We're all homeowners in here. We all have a vested interest in this community. And we've been making great strides on this. And we're doing better and better every day and the downtown is better and better every year. Why not continue that instead of putting us back? And, and like Pat, I, I appreciate Pat's input and I appreciate Kristen's input. And, and I think those are answers, questions that need answers.
Thank you, Drew. Next on the list is Harry.
Gitlitz.
Gary Gitlitz, excuse my pronunciation, sir.
That's okay. Thank you. I had asked two questions, which Mr. Marcus did not attempt to address and I would like to have them addressed. And one is the area, does the area of the three buildings comply with the zoning compliance table? And the sheet flow question that I had about if the water goes into wetland, it's one issue. And if it doesn't, how is it contained and how is it treated and where does it end up? I respectfully ask for an answer.
Thank you, Harry. Donna?
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Merrick, for explaining the hazards, but my, my question was more about the runoff from the water being used or from if it gets wet, if the materials get wet because it's a rainy day when things are coming in. The second thing is, Mr. Marcus addressed, he said, yes, we talked about fire suppression at the last meeting. At the last meeting, his answer to that was, was we don't currently have a plan for fire suppression. So I was asking if there was an updated plan to include fire suppression now in a plant that where you're having potentially hazardous material. And if there's a catastrophe, that could create toxic fumes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Patrick? Patrick?
Hi. There we go. Can you hear me now? Yes. Hi, thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. First, I'd like to point out, even if this, even if I didn't live down the street from this, let's say I lived on the other side of the town, I would still have my viewpoints on this as I feel it, it's, that's why I'm speaking up. Also, my, these are all my opinions and no way do, does this reflect anything on the applicant. He, you know, does a good business there. You know, I, in no viewpoint is this to be negative on him. Second, I agree with Neil Marcus. I do, we do need, or we need legal understanding of this and if compliance or expert understanding, and again, this is my opinions and the zoning board is where I go to for that understanding. I, I'm giving you my opinions. The zoning board will take those opinions and the opinions for or against that, you know, that are given and come up with their decision. And that's exactly what I'm presenting. My concern is with if this application meets the requirements as it's outlined in the amendment to the zone. Obviously, I feel one way about it, others may feel other, but it's up to the zoning board to take all that information, cycle it through and come to a decision on that. And so I do agree with Neil that you need expert interpretation and that's exactly why I am speaking out to the zoning board so they can make that decision. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Kristen, Kristen?
Hello?
Kristen? Kristen? I, I've, I've unmuted her.
Hello? This is, no, but I'm on Kristen's line. This is Mark Canastreri. I'm a homeowner in Danbury.
Okay.
Okay, I found out about this through Kristen and have attended and been involved in this process in some, at some level since the beginning. And I guess I'm representing all of Danbury this evening as no one else has showed up from my, our city.
Okay, I have, I know the name. I'll spell it for you afterwards.
Okay.
And the address?
My address is 80. My address is 88, well, I'm calling from Worcester Street, but my, my property is 88 Garfield Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I want to say, number one, that I share the residents' concerns in Bethel, both from the fact that I'm currently residing in Bethel. But, but I also have these similar concerns for Danbury. Living in Danbury, I, we, as it said earlier, we have a very large garbage slash recycling slash transfer, whatever you want to call it, in our town. We also have a very large old junkyard that's been capped. And on nice spring and summer days, you can still get a whiff of, as a result of all the years and of the dumping of garbage there. My, my concern also would be, and I can give you an example just as recently as today, is some of these trucks that carry debris, quite often even with having their, their covers on top of the, on top of their loads, will lose garbage or debris out of their, out of the tops of these vehicles. And that actually happened to me today on 84, driving from Danbury towards Waterbury, where that exactly happened. And I did not get a cracked windshield, but that has happened to me in the past. That being said, I really am not looking forward to having any more garbage or building materials or asbestos in my, in our city, in the city of Danbury, nor would I wish that for my neighbors. And I know for myself, I've done a lot of home construction, both, you know, in Danbury and in Bethel. And I've never had a problem finding a place to bring that material. I can tell you most recently, I utilized the facility in Danbury. So as far as there being a need, you know, whether this will be a successful business or not, if the board is, grants this, this process to go through, isn't really very relevant in my mind. It's the effect of that it will have both on the town of Bethel and the city of Danbury and the traffic and the, and the overall safety and the environment. That's, that's kind of where I stand. And, and I can tell you, on Main Street, for example, if they're coming down Main Street to get to 84, the, when you get from South Street and coming from Bethel, going to Danbury, or either way, but the end, the end of Danbury there, it is basically two lanes going in either direction, but without a dividing line, which can be quite tricky sometimes when you have people that, you know, may think it's two lanes, may think it's one lane. So I think, you know, having the more, especially bigger, heavier vehicles coming down that street, I think the more opportunity there is for accidents and or injuries. So, so these are my concerns. And it sounds like there's some similar concerns for the homeowners and the residential property owners close to this facility. So outside of that, I just want to make sure I hit every concern. I can tell you in my, in my particular area of Danbury, I'm about two roads off of Main Street. And quite often, we have people that will cut through my road. It's, it's not a dead end. It's a, and unfortunately, we get people that will cut through with trucks. We get people that cut through and come speeding down my road. And I don't know that necessarily any of the trucks going to or from this facility would be a part of that. But perhaps maybe they would add the congestion or some congestion or at some level to the, to the Main Street area, which may prompt people to look for alternate avenues. And instead of doing 25 through my neighborhood, cut through in an effort to save time and speeding and putting Danbury residents in, in harm's way. Hopefully, that would not be the case, but certainly it's, it's one of my concerns is it's already something that happens on occasion and certainly would not like it to happen with any further, any, any more regularity. Yeah, and I'm also very, I'm an environmental person in that I enjoy going out into the environment, walking and doing hiking and so on. And I am concerned for how this may impact the surrounding areas, the waterways, et cetera. And I think some of which run by Kristen's home and on Worcester Street, maybe not, I think below ground. But nonetheless, you know, I think that waterway kind of travels down South Street towards the back of and or through Worcester Street. So these are my concerns. And it's unfortunate that more people from Danbury didn't show. I don't know if that's because their lack of awareness, not really sure how. I wouldn't have found out if it wasn't for a Bethel resident. So that's how I found out. Interesting, interested in hearing maybe a little bit more about that. But thank you very much for listening and that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, um, do we still have Neil back with us or is he on the other call?
I'm back.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. But by the way, just as an aside, to the envy of every planning and zoning commission, while I took a brief recess, the Reading Planning and Zoning Commission took my matter, concluded it, voted favorably and closed the hearing. That, that could be a record.
You're very lucky.
I am, thank you.
All right, so Neil, I don't know if you heard any of the comments or questions.
I heard a couple of them, but I was listening to two hearings at the same time. Basically, you know, the, one of the long comments that I heard was kind of interesting is saying the type of development you want in Bethel in terms of the, you know, it's like we're talking about the town plan of development more than an application for a site that's currently being used the way it's being used in a zone that's currently zoned industrial. I sensed that some of the comments were that Bethel really shouldn't have its current industrial zone. Again, this application is not addressing that question and nor do we attempt to. And it's more of a philosophical debate that you'll get into when you do your, you're not your annual, but your regular reviews of the plan of development. But the, I think, and again, it carries over to some of the other comments, particularly the last comment about the effect of traffic and the concern with the impact on waterways. I mean, it's not as if we're going to get this facility approved and therefore people are going to create construction debris at a far greater rate because all of a sudden, there's a wonderful new facility on Worcester Street. That just doesn't happen. I mean, what's happening is whatever we're going to go, whatever's going to go to Worcester Street now is likely traveling through downtown Danbury to White Street. So it's a, I appreciate the fact that, that nobody likes to see construction debris. But then again, people do like to see construction because that's progress. I mean, right now, particularly right now with the economy, the way we are, I mean, anybody who hated seeing school buses in the morning now says, God, I wish I'd see a school bus on the road. You know, anybody who hated seeing construction going on would now say, yeah, but, but that's the lifeblood of a vibrant community. So the suggestion here that all of a sudden this facility is going to create traffic conditions or that for Danbury that aren't already going through Danbury, again, stretches the imagination. So at the end of the day, you know, we're still of the mind that we have a recycling facility. There's a need in the community. We are talking about small contractors, household, house owner, you know, homeowners doing their own work, not the, not people that are tearing down, you know, 10-story office buildings. That's not what this facility handles. It handles a small, very unique boutique operation. And it serves a need. You know, with all due respect to the fact that everybody hates to see garbage move through their town, you know, there's no alternative. I mean, we, except for to get rid of garbage and recycling construction debris is one way to do that. You recycle it and use it for something that's a little bit more in line with environmental concerns. So the comments that people are making are on a level that goes way beyond what we're applying for. We're applying to allow people who are in the community to recycle construction debris at a facility that already exists in the community in an industrial zone on the Danbury town line. And all the other concerns are people's general gripes about, about what they don't like about the way the roads are being managed, the, the way that trucks on Interstate 84 are failing, failing to properly tarp their loads. And by the way, that's a huge problem, but that's not what we're addressing here because the little guy coming through Bethel, hopefully at 30 miles an hour or less, is, is not the, the truck that they're talking about on Interstate 84. And by the way, I, I commiserate with the speaker because I can't tell you how many windshields I've lost in my car on Interstate 84. But guess what? It's mostly getting hit by ice that's worse, coming off of trucks. But the, the fact of the matter is that I'm going to ask the commission and the public to bear with us as we focus on this particular application at this particular site. And it's not a large application. You're talking about an 8,000-square-foot building. And by the way, it is one building. Storage sheds are not regulated as part of the zoning regulation that limits the size of a recycling building. It is 8,000. And again, the measurement, that's something that, that Pat Parifort mentioned earlier and said that he disagrees with the way we're doing it. Well, I would go back to, again, to our town attorney, our town planning and zoning attorney, and ask him to tell you, give you some guidance as to how it's measured. Because quite honestly, it's measured from the use and not from the, the, the boundaries of the property. And that is way, that's the way, I, I see that there's some body language disagrees, but that is the way that the town attorney dealt with it in Francis Clark. So I'm comfortable with the fact that all the attorneys that were involved in Francis Clark did the measurement of their 500-foot setback the same way. So that's where we are. I mean, other than that, as I say, if there are specific questions that I didn't catch, Merrick has been listening to and he'll be able to answer some of those specifically.
Neil, I did have a couple. Mr. Getlets had a question around the number of buildings that are going to be on the property. And he also had a question about the two slopes bifurcating water to the wetlands or where does it end up?
That's perfect for Merrick. Go ahead.
Yeah, so let me jump in because I know that Attorney Marcus probably missed a lot of those questions. And I do have a few here that I want to respond to. A couple of them are from Harry. One was regarding the zoning table. The zoning table I had on there, 8,000 square feet to comply with the 8,000-square-foot building that was approved back in 2017. That doesn't mean that is, it could be incorrectly spoken on that table at this point. I do have to research it because I don't have the table in front of me. But that's only, that was primarily for the 8,000-square-foot building to make sure that what we're proposing complies with, with that requirement. I'm sure that the maximum coverage building for the entire site is a lot larger than that. But I will have to research that size and update that for the record.
Buildings, excuse me, how many total buildings are going to be there? That was his question.
I believe there are two buildings. One is a scale house and one is the 8,000-square-foot or under 8,000-square-foot building that's on site with some covered canisters as well for the recyclables.
Thank you.
Now, Harry's other question was the surface drainage. The drainage pattern, nothing is leaving the site. Everything is going to be caught within a catch basin and going into the subsurface drainage system. Calculations have been amended a couple of times, addressing comments from the Wright Pierce Company. And as far as I know, I have not heard anything back since mid-February from them. So I'm assuming everything is okay. I'm sure that we'll have to get some clarification on that. But I think we've addressed all the drainage concerns for the surface runoff.
There was a question on the fire suppression system?
Yeah, I'm working on that next. Donna had a couple of questions. I got them here. Her question was regarding fire suppression. It is my understanding that fire suppression is not required in this building. We do have a fire hydrant onsite near it. If the building department or the client wishes to put a fire suppression system in or if it is required at some point and to address any water leaving the building that would affect the outside, what we're proposing was we would retrofit the building with drainage system to go into a holding tank or even possibly into the sewer line if we have to, which is on the adjacent site. So none of the water, if any, that would be inside the building would be leaving the building and getting into the environment. And that said, we would have some drainage inside the building to take any additional water, if there was anything. And I think those are only a few technical questions that were, that Attorney Marcus missed.
Pat may interrupt for a second in regards to when Merrick was trying to answer the building coverage on the site. And the property is located in the industrial zone and the maximum building coverage is 50%. So whatever is proposed presently on the property is less than the 50% that's allowable by the zone. That's all I had to say.
I think Mr. Getlets has his hand up. I don't think that's from a previous question. We can take one more question before we move to the commission members.
Okay, thank you. The engineer did not explain to me what happens to the water that is running away from the, the galley system towards the wetlands. I wanted to know if it goes, either A, goes into the wetland or B, if it doesn't go into the wetland, how does it get treated to be clean and where does it wind up? He just said that he did drainage plans. I understand he did a drainage plans. That would, that is what made me think of the question. I'd like to know where the water on the back half of the property ends up. Thank you.
Neil, do you want to take that or?
Merrick.
Merrick, do it.
I can take that. I can take that. The existing drainage system that is out there right now currently discharges towards the western end of the property, towards the rear wetlands. We are also incorporating a, I'm trying to look at a plan here. We are also adding a stormwater treatment structure to address any of the, the surface runners that gets into the system so it prevents the material getting into the wetlands directly. On the plans, it's located about midway on the site is what we're introducing as part of this drainage.
Merrick, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt. Do you have the, do you have the capability to share your screen?
I, I do not, not here at home, I don't.
Okay. Because if you did, it might be easier for the public to follow along with what you are trying to explain. Pat, would, would you be interested in seeing what that looks like?
Sure.
Okay.
It's in our file, isn't it?
Yes, it's, it's one of the items that was submitted as, as part of the application. It was in the Google Drive for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Let me pull that up on my screen so we can share that with everyone. Merrick, feel free to keep going in the meantime if you have other comments.
No, I think I addressed that. I mean, I wish, this is really hard on the computer. I wish I was in person, I could actually point to a board. But basically, the runoff is going into the storm scepter system, which then discharges into the existing subsurface drainage system, which eventually does discharge to its current outlet, well, now to the western end of the property. Once again, this was reviewed by Wright Pierce. They, they have reviewed and acknowledged the drainage for the site.
Pat, while David's trying to bring that up, do you want to go to the commission and start?
Now, I see we've got another hand raised. I don't know who Joyce's iPad is. This will be the last we'll take from the public so we can get commission members' comments.
Okay, Joyce, you're unmuted?
Yes, hi.
Yes, hi.
Could you state your name and address for the record, Joyce? I think it's your first time talking.
Correct. Joyce Lewis, 49 Worcester Street in Bethel. My concern is a lot about safety. I've been living here over 20 years. And we first moved here, it was a smaller town, not a lot of traffic. I brought my kids into town, riding bikes, walking. It was definitely quieter than it is now. I do have a daycare in my home and I have several children. And when there is school, I have three, four, or five buses that come to my house. Now, there is already traffic issues with the buses having cars stop. But with the trucks, if there's more traffic coming down Worcester Street, what there will be, to me, that's more hazardous conditions for buses and for children waiting for buses on our street. And them waiting on the streets for the buses and kids crossing the street. And I am outside when there's school, obviously. And there are so many times that there's concerns, but with bigger vehicles, I have a big concern with that happening. And as the warmer weather, you know, there's going to be more people on the streets, more activities going into town, more summer programs in town. If there is more traffic and more trucks, which there's going to be, you can't say they're not coming down Worcester Street to come, even if it's the small, you know, pops doing construction or replacing their, you know, cabinets in their kitchen. Instead of having them go to the transfer station down 53, they're going to be coming down my street. And what is that going to do for my property value? And that's my concern.
Thank you, Joyce.
For homeowner, thank you.
David, is it working or no?
I'm about to share my screen. And before I do, Merrick, the last revised or the date on the latest revised site plans is March 5, 2020. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to be sharing my screen. So everybody should be able to see the date on the revised plans here as March 5, 2020. Mr. Kement, is there anywhere on this site plan you would like me to go to in particular?
Actually, if you can go to the center of the site.
This area here, sir?
Yeah, right there. Can you see my mouse? No, you can't see it.
I cannot see your mouse.
All right, 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 right there would be good, I guess. If you're looking, if you can see the scale house, if you went past the scale house a little bit to the right, you'll see a round circle. And if you look, that's called a stormwater treatment structure. Nope, higher up, higher up, a little higher, right there, right there. So all the water is going to be caught from the site into the catch basins and going, directed into that stormwater treatment structure. From there, it's going to go directly into the existing stormwater drainage galleries, which is located above that. Correct. And then from there, it goes directly up or in a westerly direction to the, which is an existing pipe now, which discharges towards the wetlands area.
Are there any other areas you wish for me to point out for you, Mr. Kement?
The only addition would be the proposed building to the left there. What we're collecting from there is the roof drainage from that site, from that building. And you can see that pipe right there, which is labeled RD for roof drain. That is clean water from the roof. So that is going to be discharged into an existing catch basin, which also goes into the existing drainage system that's currently on site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have anything else that you wish to share, to present on this site plan while I have it up, Mr. Kement?
Not at this time unless there's some specific questions.
Okay. We can refer back to this if the commission has any questions, Pat.
I'd like, I'd like to move on to commission members now.
Okay.
Or comments or questions. And Ken, I'll start with you.
Nope, gotcha.
Clearly immense amount of anguish and talk about traffic. But I've lived in this town since I was a child and Worcester Street is a major traffic connector between Danbury. And with the increase in population, there's going to be an increase in cars and trucks. Over 40 businesses are already on that street from stop sign to stop sign. And if you read the instructions carefully about his application, 90% of the business he's doing now is going to be stopped. He's replacing that 90% with his new business that he's going to start there. So I see is almost a wash in traffic. Even if there's another 10 vehicles going in there, it's not going to be noticed on Worcester Street. That's how I see the traffic. As far as the water flow on the property, you got to have faith in Wright Pierce. They're an engineering company. They know what they're doing. I have no issues with the water where it goes. I read very carefully the state of Connecticut regulations regulating this kind of a business. It's extremely difficult to have a business like this and have the state on your back the entire time you're operating. There's incredible amount of details and regulations that have to be followed here. And if you don't follow it, the penalties are quite severe. So I think there's going to be a tremendous amount of eyes on this property and as far as the state and the public, so it's going to be difficult anyway. The other thing is people who live in this area, you know that this is an industrial road. You have to accept some responsibilities where you move, knowing what is there. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Ken.
Are you on mute, Rich? Of course I am. But I'm back. Thanks, Pat. Yeah, no, no, no further comments from me. I think I've made plenty of comments in previous meetings and it's good to hear from the public and it's always good to hear. Hear from Neil, response, and I think we've got a good holistic picture of what's going on, so. Thanks, Pat.
I just have one, one comment. I believe, I believe it was true. I might be wrong, but thought that Neil called him dumb. And I didn't, I didn't see it that way on my screen, so I think we could clear that up. I think he was referring to the project as being dumb if it wasn't, wasn't going to succeed.
Yes.
Any comments that the individual had made? That's all I have to say.
Thank you for bringing that up, Bob. I have no questions. Kitty?
No. On mute? Thank you. Okay. Hello?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay. There's one thing I want to say at the outset that I don't think most people understand. Forgive me for going on, but the transfer station on 53 does not take what this building, what this application is going to take. They don't take construction material. They don't take asbestos. So I think people should know that. Okay, the other thing, I would like very definitely to have Chuck Enders discuss, answer the question because I don't agree with what Mr. Marcus said about the 750 feet, measuring it from the building on the site. I've always, in my experience, and it's pretty long on this board, we always measure it from the lot lines, not from a building on the lot. But I would trust Chuck to tell me I'm wrong. There was one other thing, I was going through the materials today, and there's quite a bit of material at one of the meetings, and I think it was Patrick Parifort. I can't be sure because there's been so much input, that there was a, some sort of rule that when you had, when there was a public, public housing near a facility like this, that you had to be 1,500 feet away from it. Now, it's in my notes and I don't know who it was who said it, but I would appreciate if somebody could check it out. The other thing is, as far as the sprinkler system comes, I did not find within my notes the, the letter from Tommy Galliford. Do they have to have, because they handle hazardous material, a sprinkler system? What I understood from listening to Neil, that they were going to simply take a hose and sprinkle it down. Now, I'm not sure which is, which it is. Do they need a sprinkler system or can they just use the hose? So it has to be one or the other. And I would like a little bit more definitive answer on the use they expect because, I'm sorry, Neil, but it's sort of been all over the map when we're talking about how many trucks and how many users you're going to expect. And for now, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kitty.
I'm finding Penny. There we go.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So in addition to some of the questions that I've heard from my fellow commissioners, I understand that this is in an industrial zone area. I also understand that adding the amount of traffic, and I agree, I think that, that that has been severely underestimated, I think is a serious problem considering that that part of Worcester moves into a highly residential area with very narrow streets. So I have a very big concern about safety. And I would also like to hear from council about the 750 feet. That also very, that very much concerns me. Other than that, nothing else.
Thank you, Penny. Are you on mute, Linda?
Not anymore.
Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank the public also for their very thoughtful questions and comments and the answers that we got in return. But I would like to echo Kitty and Penny's questions about those distances, how they're measured and what exactly they are.
Thank you, Linda. Rob Stoll?
I would also echo what Linda just said. But I would also just like to get a little bit more specific information on the type of permit that we're looking at here. Because I went through most of the regs that I'm looking at. And as I'm looking at recycling facilities, as Neil kept on, you know, making the distinction between a transfer station versus a recycling facility, and transfer stations are typically municipal, where recycling facilities can be privately owned, I find five different types of recycling facilities. And I'm not sure that this fits into any one of those particular baskets. So perhaps, I'm not sure if that question falls more to Mr. Kement's expertise or to Attorney Marcus. For instance, of the five recycling facilities, let's see, one, two, three, four of them refer to source separated solid waste and bulky waste. However, I mean, I think it would be generally accepted that the material that would be coming in here would certainly not be source separated. I mean, you're talking, you know, dumpsters of stuff. So there's, I guess that's my, the gist of my question.
Thanks, Rob. Rob Wallace?
Yes, hi, everybody. Again, like everybody else, I'd like to thank the public. I think the conversation around this has been great. I have no questions for the applicant or their representatives here. Just echoing what I've heard from other commission members, I think it's important for us to seek guidance of council related to the 750-foot setback issue. And what I'm gathering, I think in good faith to the public, it's worth considering the issue of the traffic study, having a third-party organization to carry out a study, I think is just, would be important for good faith with the, with the public. But that's a matter for the, for the commission to decide. I just wanted to state my opinion on that. And that's it.
Beth, any comments from you?
Yes, just a few. In regards to, it seems that a lot of the members of the commission would appreciate an opinion from council in regards to the regulation itself and distances and things of that nature, which I'm sure he can very readily give you within the next two weeks by your next meeting. Also in regard to traffic and traffic study, usually it's been practiced in the past. The police commission is the traffic authority in the town of Bethel. And if the police, we need to have the police commission give them an opportunity to review what has been submitted by the applicant. And they will determine if we need more information or they need more information. And at that time, they would let you know as a commission.
Thank you. So looking at other comments and questions that are here, Neil, did you want to take a look at this? I'm just not sure how many of these we can answer tonight.
The ones that, the ones that the commission just came up with?
Yes.
No, I think we'd like to respond to those, hopefully in writing. But a lot of them seem to reflect the, require the town council because a bunch of commission members say, how do you measure the 750 feet? So we'll have to hear from Chuck on that. The rest of these, I guess Merrick and I can sit down with Rob and answer, particularly, I think the real understanding of the different types of recycling centers or facilities and how we fit, where we fit in. Because I don't think we want to try to do that off the cuff tonight. We would, we'll respond to you on that.
I just, I'm just reviewing this myself and please pardon the interruption, Neil. I know that at one point, we talked about the 1,500 feet from a public housing and we, I came up with an answer. I apologize for not having that answer readily available to everybody, but it really pertains to the city of Danbury and an instant, that instance that was happening there. Look at my notes, I'll check to see what that is referring to, but I will tell you that I know it does not apply.
Yes, you and I, you and I give you that.
The other thing is, as far as the sprinkler system and requirements for a sprinkler system within the building, again, I did speak to the building official about that and to the fire marshal. I will have something in writing for you because that's a determination that's really made by them at the time of construction, from what I recall. And it has to do with the size of the building. So I'll get that information for you and have it readily available before the next hearing.
I agree with you on both of those.
All right. So pretty much all of the open questions are, will be addressed at the next meeting. So if I may, we're going to table this public hearing to May 12.
Kitty, Pat, before you do that. I have to thank Bob Legnard for correcting me. As you know, for years, he's been watching me and making sure that when I stumble, I'm corrected. He's, he hasn't lost a step. But what I did say was that the idea of building this would be dumb if there were not a market to use it. And I certainly didn't reflect on the.
On the person.
Self. I just said that we would be the fools to do this. himself. I, I just said that we would be the fools to do this. And, and, and Bob correctly perceived that. As usual, Bob, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. So again, uh, this public hearing is now continued to May 12th. Uh, moving on to our business meeting, I'd like to see Linda Curtis for Steve Duchell. We have our meeting minutes of the 14th. If I may have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second. Bob Legnard.
Let me, let me make sure everyone's unmuted before we, we continue there, Pat. Who am I missing? Am I missing anyone?
Kenny's still muted.
Up and Ken Parsons. Okay, thank you.
And Penny.
Yep, yep.
I'm sorry, paying attention.
I'm trying, I'm trying to go through the names to, to find and unmute them.
All right. So it was Kitty and Bob?
Yes.
And Linda.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
I
But I have
opposed?
We have to do roll call. Wait, timeout, timeout, everybody. Okay, with the minutes, I believe that Bob Legnard wanted to say something. Pat, unfortunately, to do voting on the Zoom, it's got to be individual. Everybody just
Okay.
You know, you don't have to say Bob Legnard, Bob, yes, blah, 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 and just go through the list.
Right. All right, uh, Bob, you had a comment?
Yes, in, in the minutes, I, I think we corrected, uh, last month's minutes, uh, about the value of the property on Hollyville Road.
Yes.
Nice.
Uh, it, it still is wrong, I believe. It says $1,639 is the value of the property.
Oh, gosh.
I'll buy it.
I'll take a look.
I would have bought it.
Oh, yeah, no, now, now it says 1,390.
All right. I don't know how that happened.
1,390, which is, I think it's supposed to be 3, $139,000 value of the property.
Oh, so I'm getting it up there is what you're saying. Actually, it goes up, uh, $10,000 each month. Okay, it's a hun, tell me what the number is again.
I don't know what the number is, but that one isn't the right one.
Okay.
Hundred, it's, because we've been dealing with this, it's 139,000.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. So Kitty, you're fine with the change?
Yes.
I'm in favor of the, uh, amended minutes.
Thank you. Uh, Ken?
Yes.
Rich Tibbetts?
Which is muted.
Yeah, he keeps muting himself.
Rich?
Rich is, Rich is
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Or just, we're, we're approving the minutes? Are you a favor? Okay, thanks.
Please, please approve minutes. Thank you.
I am. Kitty, you are. Penny? Linda Curtis?
Hi.
Rob Stoll?
I
Rob Wallace?
Uh, yes, but I did, I just noticed a typo that I wanted to make sure was picked up in the last item on the department report. The name of our TOD and village architectural consultant is inconsistent. It's either both Tito or, uh, Bopati in that.
Melissa Bopati.
Right. So with that correction, absolutely fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, there it is. All right, um, moving on, we have nothing for, do we have any invoices? Nancy?
I don't have invoices this month.
Thank you. And we have nothing for a work session. Moving on, we have new business for acceptance. Shelley Woods LLC, care of Draper, eight dash 30 G, nine units. And Oakwoods LLC, care of Draper, eight dash 30 G, 11 units. I'm sorry, Shelley Woods is 47 Shelley Road. And Oakwoods is nine Good Hill Road. And we want to discuss these for acceptance, Beth?
Um, I would tell you the applications at this time are complete and they can be accepted by the commission.
Okay. So we have to refer these out then?
Um, what you would have to do is schedule, um, if you look at your notes.
Yep, for either July 2nd. We have 65 days, so we can schedule this out to July 2nd. Or we could set up a special meeting for these hearings on the 29th of June. And that hopefully the, the public can then come into our meeting room.
What you do have, um, now that we're under the COVID and we don't know how long we're going to be in lockdown and how these meetings will be constructed. I would say scheduling it for the 29th, if you don't mind doing a special meeting. That way you can continue and do your regular business, hopefully within a conference room. You may have to do a meeting with this if we can accommodate. Um, if that's the case, you may want to try to, there's an extension, a 90 day extension on top of that 65, if we're close to not being able to have a public meeting in a conference room. So there's other options there, but I think in this instance, it's best to put it out as far as you can to see how the world's going to be at that time.
All right, so take a look at June 29th for now. And see when everything opens up.
I would schedule the public hearing for June 29th and we'll just make arrangements accordingly if the world changes again.
Okay, commission all in agreement, we'll set this up for a special meeting on, uh, Tuesday, June 29th.
Is this both Shelley and Oakwoods?
Yes.
Yes.
And it would just be, just for the newer members of the commission, that would be the only business you'll be hearing that night. You won't have to make decisions on anything or do anything else except listen to the general public and the presentation of the application.
Okay, so these don't have to be referred out for any approvals from anyone?
Oh, no, they're, they're going to be referred out to everybody, yes. All the various departments for review.
All right, do you want a motion from a commissioner for that?
I would love that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to set, to set a public hearing date of June 29th for Shelley Woods LLC, uh, 40, 47 Shelley Road, eight 30 G, nine units. Oakwoods LLC, eight 30 G, 11 units, nine Good Hill Road.
Second.
And to be sent out to all the appropriations.
Bob, is that why your hand is up?
That's why my hand was up.
Thank you. All those in favor? Oh, wait a minute, I gotta go through the list. Ken?
Hi.
Uh, Rich Tibbetts? Rich, I didn't hear anything.
Just skip over.
I'm, I'm unmuting him. Hang on, it's Kitty, it comes in late.
Okay, I agree. Kitty, you agree. Penny?
Yes, thank you. I'm, 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 I'm unmuted finally.
Thank you. Linda?
Hi.
Rob Stoll?
I
Rob Wallace?
Hi.
Okay, good.
And one other thing with, as far as these two applications are concerned, is as we get closer to the date, if it is at all possible, uh, could we authorize sidewalks for both of these?
Uh, Beth?
Yes, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the, um, the weather and all, all that kind of stuff. And so I had a thing for a minute. Okay, what's a good time to go? Um, yes, I think that would be very appropriate.
That we can all stay six feet apart.
Well, if we have to, yes, we can.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, I'll come up with some sidewalks.
Okay.
An opportunity so we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, planning and zoning department report, Bethel Woods Site Plan Revision and JHM Holdings Letter of Extension.
Yeah, and I do have a verbal too, to go over with you. In regards to, um, Bethel Woods, I sent you a folder that showed, um, some changes within the footprint. Bethel Woods is located up on Nashville Road. It is on the left-hand side, um, just to familiarize those that aren't familiar with it. Kind of has a bridge right at the beginning of the property, a bridge that goes nowheres. And the bridge is getting ready to go somewheres. Um, there's an additional eight to nine units that is proposed for the upper portion of the property. It was originally approved by you with revisions, um, dealing with the footprint of the buildings involved. This is hopefully with fingers crossed, the final revision to that project. And we're looking for your approval, um, to the final revision. But also there will be minor revisions to the final revisions dealing with the truck turning access of the fire and safety equipment in the town.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Pop?
Just a quick question. Did, did we give them, uh, more coverage on the other part of that property? Based on they weren't going to develop the upper portion?
That's correct. You gave them, uh, yes, you did.
Right.
Would that affect them wanting to develop that property now?
No.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you, Bob. Do you want to talk about JHM Holdings?
Well, I'm looking for a consensus of the commission to agree with the revision as submitted. With the understanding that the fire marshal has final approval
Okay.
of his hammer hand, hammerhead or turning radius.
All right, um, we can do this by motion then, Beth?
Yes, you can.
All right, if I, may I have a motion for this, please?
I move what Beth said.
Thank you, Penny.
You're welcome.
I love it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ken.
Sorry, who was second?
Uh, Ken.
I think I beat Ken technically, but that's all right.
We gotta wake up.
Well, I, David's got, David's got me on the delayed mute for some reason, so.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to get
Okay, we have to go through, um.
Come on, fast fingers.
Ken?
Yes.
Rich?
Yep.
Bob Legnard?
Yeah.
Uh, yes. Kitty? Kitty?
Yes.
Pa, Penny?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Bob Stoll?
I believe I'm not seated, but I would say yes if I was.
And, um, Rob Wallace?
Yes.
Uh, Beth, why, why aren't we seating Rob Stoll?
I don't do the seating, you do.
Yeah, because I only seated, I only seated them for the business meeting.
You only have Linda to
Linda Curtis was seated.
Linda for Steve.
For Steve.
That's the only one you're missing.
So then, then I, I won't ask the other two alternates for their votes.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Going, going forward.
Yep.
The other item I have, um, that would require a motion from you all this evening is, um, 6A FJ Clark Park, which is next door to Bethel Power. It's an active site. They're looking for an extension on their excavation permit from May 8th, 2020 to May 8th, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Okay, um, Ken?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
No, Bob, I have you. Uh, yes, for me, yes, for Kitty. Penny?
Yes.
Linda Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved.
The next, the next item I have for you is under the grand two. Um, I received several inquiries regarding the fence extension and changes in the site plan regarding the parking gate from the commission members and the general public. Um, the applicant has stated that the site was built according to the plan. Once an as-built survey has been received by the department, um, staff will review it and if this bears further discussion with the commission is needed, I'll be in touch with you guys and we'll discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, uh, the Dr., Dr. Volpin Testis Building located on Greenwood Avenue, um, next to Wells Fargo Bank. And I'm sorry, it's just sometimes easier to explain to you exactly where it is instead of giving you an address and having you all try to figure out where it is. Um, everybody's familiar with that property. It's a major, um, property and player in the TOD plan. The, um, there is a possible, uh, potential developer who is working with staff in the town and working with the TOD master plan on that particular area. In regards to that master, that portion of the plan, um, he is working with us to develop the pedestrian walkway as shown on the cover of the TOD plan.
Nice.
Um, staff is also, so the question to you all is, um, the first floor was the doctor's office, the second floor was an apartment. The developer, in order to do this right, it's going to take a long time. It's going to take probably six to eight months to get the plan right. Um, he wants to convert the bottom floor of the doctor's office to a rental. He's willing to work with us and say, we will do it for a 12 to 18 month period for residential use. That will enable him to carry the weight of the property itself during the process of design and development. Um, it is something that he can do anyways. But I just thought I would share that with you because he's willing to do a written agreement with the town, with us, in order to keep this going and to pursue, um, his development. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm getting a lot of nods, so I know that this is the right direction for us to go. I'm very excited. Okay, and lastly is, I have a request that, um, is, I consider part of, uh, the outdoor dining permit, which is from the notch eight. Notch eight already has an outdoor patio. Um, but they are requesting, and this was pre, prior to COVID. They were requesting approximately a 20-foot long, um, bar in the outdoor patio area. I don't know if, has everybody been to the notch for dinner yet?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we're all nodding their heads except for one. So, um, anyways, if you're familiar with the pizza oven is in notch eight, there, the kitchen is behind it and there's a very small door on the side there. So the, the idea was that the outdoor bar would be attached to that particular area. It would be covered. Um, it would seat approximately pre-COVID 12 in, in bar stools and such. But it would also service the patio area, which is already permitted to use through the town. Um, the question I had in speaking with the owner of notch eight was the hours of operation. Because it is an outdoor area. Um, it is not directly adjacent to a residential zone, but you go over a block and then you start residential zones and you also have residences on Greenwood. Um, in discussion with him, he would like to have the actual bar portion open till 10 o'clock, which I find would be reasonable. Um, to normal restaurant hours. Um,
Hey, Beth.
So I just want, I just want your input on the concept of the outdoor bar and if that would be something you would consider.
Rob Stoll has a question.
And so does Rich Tibbetts.
Go for it. One of us, David, you do it. I have to think now.
Oh, no, the commissioners have the ability to un, and to mute and unmute themselves, so they can speak freely. Okay, I'll go first. Uh, my only, I have no problem with the bar. Uh, I have no problem with 10 o'clock. The only concern that I have, and I think this has been voiced before, is the, the potential for amplified music even up until 10 o'clock. Uh, that was a problem with, with his other facility. And I, I love Tony, he's a friend, but, uh, the, the, the music has got to be something that we control.
Okay, um, I agree with you, Rob, and I've had discussions with him already on this. Um, and it, any type of music that would be on the outdoor patio would be acoustic. I hope I'm saying my musical
Yep.
... Um, not, not the amplified music.
Correct.
And that was, that was something I had spoken to him about before as a condition of his permit for the restaurant itself that went in there. Does that answer your question?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You're, you're not seeing me nod, but I'm
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's consistent with the entertainment district, uh, concept for the TOD, so. so certainly.
That sounds good.
Rich Tibbetts?
Yeah, exactly right, Rob. Is, yeah, hey, Beth, is, is the, what's his, what's his thought for, did he share, like, what does he think of the bar? Is it a permanent structure? Is it like a tiki bar model? Like, you know what I mean, like?
Similar to, similar to like a tiki bar, bar model.
So everything goes inside at night? It's just, it's just like a semi-permanent structure?
No, it will lock down, it'll have a roof, and it will lock up.
Okay.
It'll be like, it'll be a structure.
Yeah.
But he'll be able to lock
I'm gonna go get some water.
Okay.
Anything else, Beth?
I believe that's it for this evening.
Thank you so much. Moving on to public input.
DJ here?
DJ, we know you're there.
I will unmute BJ.
Mute BJ.
Oh, come on, say hello.
Hello?
Hi, BJ.
Hi, BJ.
Remember, there, remember, there are other members of the public who may or may not want to speak.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, no, I'm not seeing any other raised hands.
Yeah.
So any commission comments before we adjourn?
Uh, may I just ask, Beth, if we've heard any news on the Dr. Mike's property?
No, nothing further at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Shocker.
All right, if I may have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hate to do this. Ken?
Yes.
Rich? Bob, I have you, me, yes. Kitty? Penny? Linda?
Yes.
Rob?
Absolutely.
This is Rob's.
Bye, Rob.
We are adjourned, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, everybody, stay safe.
Candios.
Good night.
Good night. Bye.
Goodnight, bye.